Oh, just like.
Laurie's not gonna come in.
Um, yes, they are, but two of them are out there, but we don't know if they're gonna speak.
I don't, we haven't seen it.
We will call this meeting back to order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
And Dr. Mejia, can you please introduce us to who your students are with us tonight for Hispanic Heritage Month?
Absolutely. It is my pleasure. Good evening, Dr. Anderson and members of the board. These two fabulous children are Ariana and Alejandro Aldape. They are second graders, they are twins, and they are also children of a Topeka High School staff member.
Welcome. And who is our staff member that they are children of?
They are the children of Thelma Aldape, Thelma Galvez Aldape.
Well, they did an awesome job.
Thank you.
Wow, congratulations. And are you also doing a presentation this evening beyond that?
Yes, and Dr. Anderson, it is my pleasure and honor to introduce Mrs. Rains, who is one of our phenomenal music teachers at Scott. So I'm going to let her say just a few words, if you will.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here and what an honor to be here to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. It's been my, my thrill to work with these two over Zoom because they're second graders. They aren't in the building yet, so they've been doing extra work preparing their music for tonight. They'll go on and sing Hola Hola and the Scott Song.
Hola, hola, como estas? Como estas? Como estas? Hola, hola, como estas? Como estas? Hello, hello, how do you do? How do you do? How do you do? Hello, hello, how do you do? How do you do today? Hola, hola, como estas? Como estas? Como estas? Hola, hola, como estas? Como estas? S C O T T, Scott doing words, es para mí. S C O T T, Scott, Scott, Scott. S C O T T, Scott doing words, es para mí. S C O T T, Scott, Scott, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, my darlings.
Thank you.
Bravo. Thank you, Alejandro and Ariana.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rains. My pleasure.
You did an awesome job. If I could ask, could they stay for just a moment? The board may have a question or two, and right when we get down the highlights, that is generally the time. But would board members like to ask a question or two now of our two young people?
Are there any questions for Alejandro or Ariana? Ms. Bulley?
Did you have to practice a long time to be able to present to us tonight?
Yes.
I could tell. You did such an awesome job. I could tell you've been practicing a lot. We really thank you for doing that. Underneath my mask was the biggest smile I've had all day. So I just really appreciate you singing and performing for us because it made me so happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Muy bien hechos. Excelente. Me hizo muy feliz escucharles cantar. Mi pregunta es por qué les gusta tanto a Scott? Porque yo también quiero mucho a Scott. So I told them good job and how much I enjoyed listening to them and what they like about going to Scott and how I too love Scott.
Wanting to start?
Yes.
I like Scott so much because... Because my teachers.
Enter principal, right? Are there any other questions for these young children? I don't see any, but just thank you for sharing your skills and your talents with us tonight. You guys did so well. You should be proud of yourselves.
Thank you. Gracias.
Bye bye. Well, it's a fact to follow already. Ready for adoption of the agenda?
Mr. President, I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second? Mrs. Bulley offers a second to adjourn discussion on adopting the agenda. I don't see any, so Mrs. Lester, we're ready to vote.
The vote is open. All votes are in and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mrs. Lester. Next on the agenda is school highlights.
Oh, this is one of my favorite times, and we heard about part of our highlights. Under Hispanic Heritage Month, Mrs. Dr. Mejia is still on because she's just gonna share a little bit. For those that don't know much about Scott, who might be new to the district, Dr. Mejia, can you just share a small bit about Scott and any item that you'd like to share regarding Hispanic heritage recognition? And then we will be reading our proclamation and then congratulating our senior of the month following that. Dr. Mejia?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Members of the board, again, good evening and thank you for having us. Yes, so Scott, Dua Language Magnet is a very special place. It's kind of magical. So we have our scholars learning in Spanish and in English. And from preschool through first grade, they learn language arts in their native language to solidify those skills and that knowledge. Because research shows that the stronger the native language of a student, the stronger the target language of a student. Then in second grade through fifth grade, they transition into receiving language arts in both languages. From preschool through fifth grade, we do math all in English and science and social studies all in Spanish. And, you know, in a non-COVID world, we work in bilingual pairs, but we have been able to be ingenious and creative on how to maintain that in a remote setting. And as our scholars come back in person, we will continue to do that. I just want to share from the beginning of school, you know, we have, we, we have gotten our heartbeat back since our preschool and kinder kids have come back. It has been a joy to see them back in the school. And I want to reiterate the incredible work and recognize it of our reopening teams because it has been a testimonial to their hard work and ensuring that our scholars are safe and that, you know, seeing our procedures in place has been great. Our teachers have been incredible and have ensured students, made sure that students are learning, that they're engaged in that, as well as feeling safe and cared for since the first incident. You know, even some who felt a little apprehensive have shared that since the moment the kids came in and they started, everything started falling into place, they feel, I mean, they're rocking and they're rolling. They feel okay, they feel fine, they feel good, and they feel super excited to be back with our students. They have been maintaining communication with parents constantly in a remote and in-person setting. Students are adapting incredibly. I mean, the resiliency of kids is amazing. They are really not having issues with masks, which I thought would be a thing that we would have to constantly address, but not really. It has been great to watch them. Social distancing is something we continue to train them on, and they're picking up right up. And, you know, working through any opportunity that arises as a team, because at Scott, as a team, we beam, brillemos unidos, and our custodian staff has worked tirelessly to ensure that our school is ready to reopen and to receive our scholars. So overall, like I said, Scott is a pretty magical place where we celebrate culture and we celebrate language and we celebrate diversity, and it has been a great start to the year.
Thank you, Dr. Mejia. And can you begin to read the proclamation as you've now shared a little bit about the magical place of Scott? Can you share with us the proclamation and the first few sentences and the last few sentences that include the date? Unless you have a student or someone else that you'd like to read for you.
Um, well, I have the honor to do that tonight, Dr. Anderson. Proclamation of Topeka Unified School District Number 501 Hispanic Heritage Awareness Month, September 15 through October 15, 2020. Whereas each year, September 15 through October 15, is set aside to commemorate the contributions made by Hispanics throughout our nations, his, can you make it bigger, please? Our Hispanics through our nation's heritage. And whereas it is a month to reflect not only on the past, but also in the future role of Hispanics in the United States. And whereas the, thank you, Topeka Public Schools joins its fellow citizens in recognizing Hispanic Heritage Awareness Month as a month of celebrating the Hispanic contributions to our country's culture and heritage. And whereas it is fitting that the board's staff and students of Topeka Public Schools, USD 501, join the observance. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Tiffany Anderson, Superintendent of Topeka Public Schools, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Awareness Month. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Topeka Public Schools Unified School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, does proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2020, Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Awareness Month in appreciation of the dedication and hard work of our school board members who work to create an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. And be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be included in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting, September 17, 2020. And witness whereof, we, the staff of Topeka Unified School District Number 501, do hereby affix the signature of our superintendent and the official seal of the Board of Education this 17th of September, 2020.
Thank you, Dr. Mejia, and the Scott team, the magical place that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Our next highlight is our student. We're gonna begin our video for Topeka High. It's why I'm wearing gold this evening, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Gallin to start our video.
Hello, my name is Kelm Lear. I am a senior at Topeka High School.
I had Kelm Lear in Introduction to Business class a couple of years ago as he was a freshman coming in. And I knew then that he was destined to do great things.
Interact Club is definitely one of the more special clubs to me, closest to my heart in terms of just following my passion of helping others. Interact Club has definitely helped me mature in terms of being able to relate to people and just have conversation with them and understand what they're going through and just finding more ways to make a difference, even if it's a small difference, it's a difference, and that's what matters.
You want students who know how to get things done in a way that sheds a positive light on not only themselves and their family, but on the community at large and on the school. And Kelm does that. He had a goal of 2,000 masks. That's lofty, but he wanted to make sure he could have one for every person in this building and for kids that may have need especially. That was his focus. And he met his goal, and that's who he is. When he sets a goal, he meets that goal.
I am proud to tell you that you will be the very first student of the month for Topeka Public Schools representing Topeka High School in September.
Well, thank you very much.
We had a Zoom meeting today with Ms. Morrissey and Mr. Ackerman, and they informed me that I am the TPS 501 Student of the Month for the month of September.
After senior year, I'm hoping to go to either University of Connecticut or the University of Washington in Seattle and study political science. After graduating, I plan to come back to Topeka because this is my home and making a difference, particularly in areas that are less fortunate than others and sort of in left behind. And then eventually running for office.
I think he understands how the dots are connected and he understands the process of getting things done. It's, it's not just a will, it's, it's getting your, getting your ducks in a row and great communication. He's, he's pretty good at communicating and asking when he needs help.
To my fellow classmates that want to get involved, I would say, don't try to get involved in as many things as possible, but get involved in the things that you care about most and things that will help shape you the most as you go through them throughout high school. And to really just find your passion, find your it, as we like to say here at Topeka High, because that's gonna be important for not just now, but in your future when you try to figure out what you want to do.
Just want to say congratulations to you, Kelm, because I couldn't think of a more deserving student. We certainly have lots of excellence at Topeka High, and the fact that you come to mind so quickly says a lot. So congratulations. It is such a privilege to recognize you as our September Student of the Month.
And with that, congratulations. We're gonna turn it over to Ms. Morrissey to say a few words and to share what gift she has for Mr. Lear, and then we'll turn it over to our board and Mr. Lear.
Absolutely. Dr. Mickelson, members of the board and Dr. Anderson, it is always a pleasure to present a Senior of the Month to you. You know, in August, when I was asked to do this and realized that Topeka High was the first, there was a moment of trepidation. We didn't even have our seniors back yet. There were juniors last year. And I can tell you, it was only a split second, and almost immediately, this name came to mind. And as I talked to other staff members and people here in the building, everybody affirmed what an excellent choice Kelm was. I think that's partially, if not completely, because he is so community service focused. You know, he thinks of others. You heard that in the video. And he thinks about people less fortunate in a variety of ways. And he's found ways, activities, he's got people on board. When he has an idea, he goes for it. He wants them to have fun and have memories. He wants the obvious. He wants them to be safe. You saw that with the masks. He wants them to have food. He thinks about those kinds of things as well. And he doesn't just do one project here or there. You know, many students do community service. It's something they need to get into post-secondary opportunities, but it's truly the heart of who Kelm is. And it doesn't take long, when you're around him, to know that this is just something he passionately believes in. His involvement in Interact Club is both a founder and now as the president of that club, which is the student version of Rotary, if you didn't know that, I think is his passion because it is so much of who he is. And the involvement of Rotary is something I imagine he'll transition from Interact into his adulthood as a Rotary member himself. You know, and we picked him for those reasons, but I went to investigate a little deeper, and I knew Kelm was a good student, but I didn't really know just how good he was till I went in and looked at his academic record. This young man has a 4.467 GPA and is currently ranked fourth out of 362 seniors. He is an amazing young man who perhaps gets a little over-involved. Is that film, you know, Fair? Kelm, you told people not to get too many things going, but he's done that once in a while. He gets himself very involved and he's learned.
Okay, that.
Just a little. You've done that a little, but he has really learned to rein it in and find what his, his passion is and focus there. So I can say a great deal more, but suffice it to say, this young man truly represents our Troy standards every day. He even got our motto out there. You can find it in the heart of Troy and, or in the halls of Troy. So he does represent us well. It's my pleasure to introduce to you this evening our Topeka Public School Senior of the Month at Topeka High School Trojan through and through, Mr. Kelm Lear. So Kelm, two things. One is open your present so you can show everybody. And then I want you to make sure you don't forget to introduce the other family members and people that are here with you this evening before you answer the questions that we get to you. Congratulations, Kelm. I'm proud of you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morrissey. Good evening, Dr. Anderson and members of the board. Here with me today are my parents, Kyle and Abby Lear, my grandparents, Chris and Cindy Lear, and Charles, Linda Benton, and members of the Snook family. Before I go on to answering the questions, I'll do what Ms. Morrissey said and open the gift. A nice little paper put on fridge when I need to keep track of my homework. I got a keychain. I needed that because I don't have a keychain for my car key, so thank you. And a University of Connecticut t-shirt. Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Morrissey.
You're very welcome. And Kelm's had that gift for about 24 hours, and he was told he couldn't open it till just now. His mother confirmed he didn't do that.
Thank you, Morrissey and Kelm. Congratulations, Kelm. Do we have any questions or comments for our Senior of the Month from Topeka High School?
Dr. Mickelson, I hate to interrupt, but he does have some things he prepared to share you. If he could do that first and then have some questions.
That'd be wonderful. Go ahead, Kelm.
Right, so. Oh, so one of the questions I was asked was, what is one of my favorite memories from my experience in TPS 501? I'm gonna have to say I don't have one specific favorite memory, but some things that I will always remember about this district is the tremendous pride it takes and its diversity. The fact that it sees diversity as a strength and not a weakness and that it works to ensure that regardless of things such as race, religion, financial status, zip code, any of those things, they work to make sure that those don't hold students back from pursuing whatever it is they want to achieve in their life. The next question was, what teacher has really pushed me to? uh, has really pushed me to, I guess, be here, be able to be here today? I would have to say Mr. Moore. I'd really like to thank Mr. Moore because he's the one who established the Topeka High Interact Club and who pushed me to be a, an ambitious leader, one who really just wants to get the job done quickly and efficiently. It is because of him that I pushed myself to become president of the club, to become vice president of NEHS and to proudly say that I am now a, uh, alumni of Leadership Greater Topeka, Class of 2020. And now, and also because of him, I have so many different connections in the community with people at like the YWCA, Topeka South and Downtown Topeka Rotary. Um, and then as you saw in the video, I plan, my goal is to hopefully attend either the University of Washington in Seattle or UConn to double major in political science and history with a minor in Spanish. And then after college, I am coming back to Topeka, um, to become a community organizer and eventually run for office. My intentions are to work towards making sure that zip code doesn't determine a student's future, that when people move to Topeka, they feel s- safe enough to live in any part of Topeka and that when one aspect of life improves in Topeka, it improves for all Topequins. So, thank you.
Well, Dr. Morrison.
Have you worked or done anything with any political campaigns?
I have not, and I'm actually considering being a volunteer at a polling place this election. So I'm looking into that, yes.
Dr. Bonebreak.
Kelm, you make today's so awesome. You make yesterday's jealous.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments for Kelm?
Kelm, we are so proud of you. That was just, uh, I love it. I'm so happy you're here and I'm so happy you plan to come back to Topeka. Uh, my question is your aspiration to run for an office. Is there a particular office you have in mind?
Um, the dream goal is US Senator for the state of Kansas, but within just Topeka, I would say either a state senator or mayor.
Okay. Bien hecho. Gracias.
What about, have you thought about the school board?
The school board, just kind of branching out and, and experiencing all different aspects of what makes Topeka, Topeka and education is, is of course a big part of what makes Topeka, Topeka.
One final question before we let you go is, is tell us about your mask project. How'd you come up with that idea? How'd you implement it? How'd you?
Um, so Topeka High Interact Club is very passionate about community service. I mean, that's the heart of the club. And so our goal is really just to always find a way to help, um, our school or people within Topeka High in any way possible. And so when the CDC released the guidelines that stated students are asked to wear masks when we return to school, we decided, well, let's start collecting masks. And as you heard, the original goal was 2,000. And so we just started texting, texting each other in the group chat, talking about, hey, just spread the word. Tell people that, um, I or someone else will be at Topeka High every Wednesday from 12 to 12:30. And if they're able to come by and drop off the mask. And word spread around pretty quickly. We even got donations from the Kansas National Guard. They donated 4,000 alone. And really just through commu- big community effort, we were able to surpass our goal by three times what it was and get over 6,600 in total.
Wow, that's impressive. Congratulations again. Good luck to you in your senior year and, uh, next year, either on the East Coast or West Coast. We'll look for you. If we're patrons and all, you have my vote when you come back. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda is public communications and we have, uh, two people who have said that they would like to address the board. And they're going to do it via Zoom. So I'm not sure which two are, have a list of a couple. So we'll pull them up. Mr. Gallin, is that, and then I'll read some instructions to our patrons before you start. Yeah, I know. I know we had initially three or four, and I think a couple changed their mind possibly. So we'll give Mr. Gallin a few moments to pull them up and make sure they're ready. So Ms. Daniels, thank you for your participation tonight. Um, I have just a couple of instructions to share with you before you start, okay? Um, please state your name and your address for the record. You will have three minutes, once that's done, to address the board. We ask that your remarks to the board be respectful. If you should have a complaint against a specific employee, we ask that you submit your written complaint to the superintendent. If the complaint is against the superintendent, please address your written complaint to either me as board president or to the clerk of the board. Thank you.
Hello, I am Nikki Daniels at 812 Southwest 11th Street. Um, good evening, Dr. Mickelson, Dr. Anderson and members of the board. Um, based on the posted proposal and information that has been shared with me, I will defer my time and remain in the meeting. So should you want to hear from me later as well parent, I would be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Scott Kreider did your instructions.
Yeah, I heard them.
Okay. So please state your name and your address and then you can, you have three minutes.
You bet. My name's Scott Kreider. I live at 1905 Southwest High. Just like to say good evening, Dr. Anderson, the members of the board, and thanks for letting me speak tonight. Uh, I've lived in the district most of my life and I have two sons that graduated Topeka High. My wife graduated from Highland Park and I graduated from Topeka West. We're pretty well versed in 501. Uh, football, like the education in 501 has been very important in our lives for many years. So I'm happy to have a chance to speak. Uh, first off, I thought Mr. Kathy and Topeka West head coach Ryan Kelly did an excellent job last week presenting a case to start the football season. And I'm now here to support the latest proposal from Mr. Kathy that in my opinion is very well thought out. The coaches at the three high schools have done a great job following the new protocols. The athletes and the coaches have worked hard since early August and, uh, and they followed the protocols and stayed safe. Uh, the, uh, the parents and supporters have done a great job being positive and helping their players get through delays and keeping those football players safe and ready to play. With your positive votes for this proposal tonight, you will send an excellent message to these young people. It shows that you support them and you want them to represent their schools and their school district with enthusiasm and pride as they play the sport they love. Lastly, football and all the student groups like cheerleaders, band, dance teams, et cetera, are so important to getting the school kick, year kicked off right. I hope you will get behind Mr. Kathy's proposal and let's get these football players back on the field. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kreider. Are there, are there anybody, is there anybody else in the queue, Mr. Gallin? Okay, thank you. Um, next we'll entertain a motion to dispose of business by consent.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president, our superintendent to sign a special project purchasing contract for and on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. We have a motion to approve business by consent. Is there a second? Dr. Bonebreak offers a second. Is there any discussion? I don't see any. So Mrs. Lister, we're ready to vote.
The vote is open. All votes are in and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mrs. Lister. Next on the agenda is a superintendent's report.
Good evening. The first item on our agenda is to just, uh, give that update on enrollment before we get started. As we just started our first week of school and we are so excited about that. With that update on enrollment, Dr. Kip, can you please share that update, sir?
Yes, thank you. Uh, as of today, we are 99% registered and enrolled for a total of 13,133 students. Um, that, we, we talked last time at the board meeting about a, uh, post Labor Day boost and we did actually experience that. It was 153 more students registered after Labor Day. And that was primarily at the preschool level and high school. And last time I did mention some kind of concerns about kindergarten, uh, that has actually boosted up closer to what I projected. So feeling pretty good about that we're getting all those kindergartners back in. And, uh, in terms of remote students, we are just a little over 3,000. Uh, that's holding steady for, for several weeks now. So that's kind of an overview. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Dr. Kip. With those numbers, uh, we also want you to know that enrollment will be continuing and we, uh, are encouraging all families to enroll before Monday. Uh, on that note, as we continue talking about our first week of school update, uh, that final update, uh, uh, Mr. Gallin will, uh, pull up the, um, scorecard, uh, so that you can see where we are the first week of school related to the scorecard, which is now a public document. This will be in our COVID communicator. And as we enlarge that, you can see on the scorecard at this time, we are in the, uh, yellow range and it, uh, the score dropped from 16 to nine based on the scorecard that is currently posted. So we are yet, uh, I'm sorry, we're in the orange, moving close to the yellow range. I stand corrected. Moving close to the yellow range, much closer. And so we are excited about that, uh, significant drop in those COVID numbers. In addition to that particular scorecard, we also in the COVID communicator will be sharing the scorecard that shows where every state is. And later within this presentation, we'll pull that up as well because that is on the front of our website and in the COVID communicator. And that does mark Kansas and Shawnee County as yellow. So on that one, we are yellow and on this we are orange. Either way, we have declined significantly and we're excited about that. Now for the first day of school, we have some principals that are here with us today. We have elementary principals and we have, uh, Ms. Morrissey that is here because her student of the month. Uh, we'll start off with our elementary principals. You've already heard Dr. Mejia, uh, report out. And I believe we have a second elementary principal with us to talk about the first day and first week of school. So I'll turn it over to our administrators. Ms. Morrissey is first on the screen. Ms. Morrissey, would you like to share a little bit about the first week of school?
I can't tell that from here. You know, we've had a great start. It wasn't without a few glitches here and there, but for the most part, we were able to quickly help families. Uh, we set up stations and phone calls and we sent things to division offices. But as we walked around and watched our teachers, kids have logged in, even after the first day, we had teachers extremely excited because, uh, 30 of 31 kids had logged in that day. Uh, they were glad to see them. The students appeared glad to see them. They actually participated in the activities. I think there were just a lot of smiles all over the place. Uh, we've continued to monitor and watch as we've called families. So anytime we find that there's been a need, we have met that need. We have run Chromebooks to houses. We have assisted with, uh, the hotspots. We just found a family today in need of that hotspot and got those four students up and running. So it has been a wonderful experience. It has certainly been not anything we ever expected that we would do, but I can tell you because of that, it's been very rewarding. I am proud of my staff and I know as I've talked to the other high schools, not only the traditional high schools, but also, uh, the other schools such as Hope Street and Cap City and, uh, and Dr. Grimes over at Avondale, that they are experiencing similar things. So thank you for everything you've done to get us ready. The PPE comes in, so we're also ready for bodies and we're ready to see students in the halls and not just on screens. But, uh, kudos to Dr. Anderson, to all of you for the work we've done in July and in August to get ready because, uh, it has really been a fabulous start. And I think that we have shown just what Topeka Public Schools can do. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrissey. With that, uh, Mr. Gallin, we have an elementary principal as well that is joining us outside of Dr. Mejia, because I believe two elementary principals are with us this evening, as was the case last week, to talk about their start to the first week of school as well. As our second elementary principal comes on up, the last item that I will say on the first week of school, our transportation went, uh, very smoothly. We were able to practice with our preschool and our kindergarten students. Uh, every school either had a red carpet or an activity to kind of get started. And our board members, of course, we caught you dancing, Dr. Bonebreak. So you certainly had a wonderful first day of school. Um, with that last item in mind, uh, we were also so pleased with how the preschool and kindergarten, um, first day went. And we are considering, uh, uh, requesting from the board next year to look at maybe having them have their own day to come back, just like sixth and ninth do, so that we can really have some opportunity to practice. So our National School of Character and I see Dr. Gordon is ready to share a little bit about their first day of school and what they did to welcome students.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and good evening, board, President Morrissey. Uh, we have had a great, great start to the school year. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to start small. I think it made a world of difference for us as we prepared to keep our building safe for our students and as we, uh, prepare to hopefully eventually bring on more students. Uh, we always get out our balloons and our signs to let students know that we are glad to see them and to let parents know we are glad to see them. And, and those were the positive comments that we received back, that they, students felt wel- welcomed and that the parents felt welcome. I believe this is the first year we started and we did not have any crying kindergarteners. So if you can start a year like that, you can say you've had a good start to the year. So we are excited to have them back. Uh, they're doing a great job, uh, wearing their masks, uh, following the dots on the floor and making sure they're standing in the right spot. Our teachers are good, doing a good job, uh, training them and preparing them. So thank you all for giving us that opportunity.
That's our final elementary principal. And, uh, if there are any questions for our elementary principal or Ms. Morrissey, I, I do want to share that from Topeka West as well. This evening, we also have Mr. Kathy. He will close us out. If there are any questions, however, for these first three, we turn it over to the board to ask those.
Are there any questions? Dr. Morrison.
I, I've heard a lot of positive things, but there's got to be some problems. Uh, I mean, I've, I've been following San Francisco School District virtually from my home, uh, because I have grandkids there doing school and there are lots of problems. So just, you know, briefly just say one problem and what you've done to, to mitigate, what, what you've done to help that problem.
Ms. Morrissey, can you start then? Dr. Mejia and then Dr. Gordon.
Ma'am, you know, we thought we wouldn't have any disciplinary issues. They're all at home, but we've had a few kids who want to say or do something on the screens that they shouldn't. So we have worked with families in those cases as well as teaching our staff how to manage the electronics so that they can cease that and report it. So that's certainly been a unique challenge, but, uh, we are getting on top of that and it's a learning process. And I think that, uh, as we continue to go, we'll continue to find those kinds of opportunities. As Dr. Anderson always says, we have opportunities, uh, to solve problems and come out looking good. So we, we continue to do that. But that has been a challenge when you can't, uh, physically be present with the student to teach behaviors upfront, uh, and then manage it.
Dr. Mejia?
Our opportunities have been, uh, mainly around, um, assisting families with the use of technology as learning coaches for their students. It's a big role. It's a big change for them. Uh, but we have come together and put things in place, uh, to support them, constant phone calls, uh, providing translation tools, uh, that are easy to use and navigate for our Spanish-speaking families, as well as providing, um, you know, many of the websites of our teachers are, um, in both languages, understanding that we typically, you know, when you're doing, uh, language acquisition, you typically don't do translation, but we recognize that it's a new world and we have to support our families, uh, so that they can support our scholars while we're not there. Um, and you know, we had today just a couple of kindergartners, um, just, you know, a little stressed out and whatnot. But, um, again, our team came together and supported them. They calmed down pretty fast. Um, and we were successfully able to provide the support that they needed. Um, so again, we continue to, um, handle opportunities. So again, we continue to handle opportunities in the best way possible and keeping communication in the forefront. Technology has been a huge learning curve and, you know, our staff has been great in supporting parents and and it hasn't been, it has been a curve for them as well. But, you know, we keep practicing, we keep using it, we keep problem solving and we are plowing through.
Thank you, Dr. Mahia. Dr. Gordon?
I believe reassuring parents that we're going to allow some grace here in this period of getting them up on the technology and getting assignments done. I've I've had to reassure several parents that it's okay that they didn't get into the session today. We're working on that technology in and we're going to provide some grace. If students don't get assignments done during the day, evening time might be an opportunity, even the weekend. So I just want to assure my parents that we understand the challenges that they have, both with both parents working, etc., that we're going to give them some grace when it comes to getting on the computers or iPads, Chromebooks, or in getting those assignments done.
And with both of those, our parent academy gets launched next week on Tuesday and Thursday to help parents learn that technology. And so 5:30 to 6:30, Mr. Travis True will be hosting a district technology session. In the meantime, we've asked all of the principals to have their own individual school parent academies. So they're identifying a liaison with their parents to really be a bridge. So if you're struggling with tutoring in French or math or something really specific to your school, then that principal will make sure that they ask you what the issue is that you might have because with so many parents, they all have different issues that might not be technology based. And then that principal will coordinate a time for that particular parent or a session for many parents to have during the course of that week. So we'll be working on the remote piece in that way. I'll turn it back over to our board for any additional questions.
Dr. Morrison?
Just just to follow up. From my experience, staying on the technology is so very important because, I mean, in my house, we have two very bright women working with those children and and they've had trouble with the with the technology. So, you know, teaching parents who aren't as bright as my wife is 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 a big challenge. The other thing that the other problem we've had is kids, if the kids are doing really well, they get through the lessons very quickly. And I think watching out, watching that and maybe give them some extra work if, you know, they're getting through in a 30 minute lesson in 10 minutes. So my suggestions from observation. So thank you guys for all you do because I know this is terribly difficult.
Having experience with your grandchildren is good to have on our board, Dr. Morrison. Thank you for sharing that. Mr. Munoz.
I just wanted to, first off, thank you all for the work that you do. And I really resonated me with me, your your message of of grace during this time. All of us are going through incredibly complicated, you know, situations and and I think sometimes I know myself as a parent, when we pull up clever or whatever program they're using and we see eight different homework assignments. I think it's easy for our students and also for parents to feel pressured that you have to get it done and that there's you have to get that turnaround. And so I think we can't over communicate the notion and the idea that we're going to give each other grace yourselves, to both to them, to parents, and for us to extend it to our kids and then likewise to all of our staff in in our school. So thank you all.
I am hearing, you know, the difficulties for our students and our parents and trying to get it all done. But I've also heard from a lot of staff members that there's tremendous hours in this remote planning. And I'm hoping that as a district that we're able to find ways to help support them more so that that work isn't so overwhelming. And so I'm I'm seeing some shaking heads. So I'm hoping that will happen because I'm hearing of like 14 hour, 15 hour days trying to get everything done that's remote because we know this is so much harder, harder on the parent's side and the support for the parents and also for the students. So I'm hoping we can find a way to build that because we have no idea how much remote we're going to have this year. So we definitely want to support our teachers and help them. And I was wondering, as administrators, what are you doing for our teachers in your building that are probably ready to jump out their windows? How are you supporting them? Whoever would like to start?
I'd like to start. Dr. Gordon hit it on the head. It's about grace and about listening. I received an email today about from a team talking about the amount of hours and whatnot. And so I I listen and I ask them, what, you know, what, what do you need? And just keeping communication open because if we don't listen and, you know, we have expectations and we have nonnegotiables and whatnot. But it's a new world. So I am completely flexible and in listening to what the real world is now so that I can adapt as well so that they don't get burnt out and jump out the window. I don't have anyone in that situation, thank goodness. But listening, having conversations, extending grace. That that to me is is a big, big priority right now.
I would share that we've done a couple of things very intentionally during our professional development days. We literally knew the two things teachers needed the most was information about COVID. So we went through our COVID plan. So they had comfort there. And then the second thing we did was everything was about instruction. And we gave them lots of time with supports and differentiation. So some people had done things and had a different level of understanding about the various types of technology they would use. But we presented base level and gave them time and offered supports and our innovation academy teachers supported one another. So they did Zooms and breakouts. It was pretty amazing. But we literally stepped aside from some of the things we might normally do because we knew that was a huge need. They are stressed right now. We keep telling them to go slow, to go fast. Don't try to use every piece of technology that's out there. Pick what is best for your content area. Pick one, get good at it and just settle in. The guides that we gave them, don't lecture the whole time, give kids time to work. That's okay. The grace is certainly a part. I've had a lot of teachers, as we've talked about homework and the importance of homework over the years, they're seeing the stress of their kids because they feel it and they're really embracing kids, showing them what they know in different ways than the traditional. I think we're going to come out of this on the other side even better, teachers. And the other thing I'm doing right now is we're trying to minimize collaboration. A lot of times we do a lot of things structured in that. Administratively, things we're trying to do or that we need to to cover. And right now I'm really allowing them to collaborate together because they are completely using all of their time to help one another, to learn the technology, to ask for help from our instructional coaches, to get their lessons out there and just to support one another. So I think just letting them focus on what's important right now, which is their instruction in kids and then listening. We just listen to them when they're stressed and we try to find solutions.
Dr. Gordon, I think you're on mute. I think you're on mute, Dr. Gordon.
Got it. Thank you.
It happens to all of us, trust me.
I was depending on Scott to take care of that for me. I was just saying, I agree with what both of them have already said. The listening is key, being very sympathetic and empathetic to what our staff are needing right now, reminding them that maybe it doesn't all have to be done today. Me taking any expectations or requirements that I might have made a year ago, maybe not making that same requirement right now in this present situation that we're in. So sometimes I have to step back with my expectations. Meeting with the leadership team, I'm like, oh, we need to study this. And then I said, no, we're not going to do that. I'm going to, you've worked hard today. We're going to table this and we'll come back to it at a later date. So just remembering that if we don't have to add another thing to our teachers' plates, that's a good thing.
Are there any other questions for these leaders? Go ahead, Mrs. Bulley.
Um, visiting the schools yesterday, I have to say in, I was at Scott, and so I can definitely speak to them that they were tremendous. And I know it took some bravery to come yesterday to greet their children and I appreciate them so much. And the way they were so professional, I am sure that happened across the district. It happened in all three of my buildings that I visited, Scott, Ross and State Street. And so I want to really thank those teachers. If the community doesn't realize our teachers are heroes, I'm hoping they hear that now. They are stepping forward and they're heroes. So I hope they're treated as such.
Thank you for those comments, Mrs. Bulley. Any other questions? I just have a couple of comments, one for Dr. Mahia. Thank you. You sent a photograph of our pledge allegiance children today and that this after this evening and Dr. Anderson forwarded on to everybody. So Ariana and Alejandro, so thank you so much for sending that. Dr. Gordon, your comments about no crying kindergarteners reminded me of my own son 15 or 16 years ago. He was one of those criers. He was mostly worried about where his lunch was going to come because he saw somebody with a lunch sack and he didn't have one. So that was his most biggest concern. So you never know why they're crying, I guess. It wasn't because he was going to miss his mom or dad. It was thank you so much for all you do. I'm reminded of of comments Dr. Watson made this week about how our educational system is under more stress than it's probably ever been in its whole history. And you guys are leading buildings and educators and you are heroes for what you're doing. So we thank you so much for you and your and your colleagues in your buildings and across the district for what all that you're doing. So thank you and have a good evening.
So as we conclude the wrap up of the first week of school update, just the final items on that, that's that map that we were just talking about. So we started off with sharing the number of students that we have. We heard a little bit from some administrators. We talked about being yellow and orange. And so again, the Shawnee County Health Department issued their map. And on their indicator map, it showed us as orange and being very low on the orange. So we are down to nine. So therefore, we're very close to yellow. However, on this map, Dr. Gray will share a little bit about what this map is. And then we'll we'll circle in on the Shawnee County area very briefly. Dr. Gray and then Dr. Gray will go right on into the final item that we have to celebrate this first week of school. Dr. Gray?
Again, thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. As you can see from this map, the state of Kansas, you see colors everywhere, but specifically when we look at Shawnee County, it's located over in that's right. Okay, there we are. Shawnee County, if you notice, we are in the yellow and that's pretty much like what we're seeing with our Shawnee County scorecard, which again, as Dr. Anderson shared with you guys, we went from 16 to nine, which is very close to yellow. I believe in order to be in the yellow, you have to be somewhat around seven or eight. So again, we're seeing pretty consistent data from, based on what we're seeing here with the global academic map as well as with our Shawnee County scorecard. So again, we're excited about what we're doing to keep everyone safe. So again, I think all of you guys need to be applauded for that great work.
So as Dr. Gray mentioned, that leads us into when do we start back school? So we know that our scorecard talks about starting back when we are yellow. Again, between those two scorecards of being low orange and being at the global map, that's also on our website of being yellow. Now that we're at those stages, we do believe that our kindergarten and preschool should continue going to school another week and having a full week of school. You know, they started on Wednesday and they did a great job. We look forward to seeing them continue throughout next week. So they have a full week of getting on a bus and off the bus. Many of the parents this week took them to school and we encourage them to do that just to reduce anxiety with all of the new things and masks and what have you. But we know that next week that we'll have far more students on the bus. The kindergartners have had a chance to have a nice orientation experience of having the whole building to themselves and the playground to themselves to learn all the things that they need to learn related to COVID as well as related to other matters. Moving from that, after having all of next week, which is the week of the 21st, to continue a full week for kindergarten and preschool, we're looking at the 28th of having the next group pending these continued positive numbers that our preschool kindergarten would continue, but then first through fifth would begin on the 28th. And sixth and ninth are those other grade levels. Having those grade levels in, they'll have the opportunity to, again, have orientation, have the building to themselves to some degree, find their lockers and all the things that sixth and ninth would normally do. And then we'll be bringing in all remaining students. And so that would mean that by the first Monday in October, all remaining students would be able to transition in. And again, we're projecting that these continued downward trends would continue for our students. So the stress levels that we've talked about with remote learning for our in-school teachers and other matters, we anticipate will decline greatly over the course of the month of September and the first portion of October. So we'll be keeping you updated. We'll be sending out the COVID communicator on Friday to our staff and and to our parents on Friday to share the scorecard and the projected movement forward. Now, in order to start school, people have to enroll in school. So we want to say one more time, we need everyone to enroll before Monday, knowing that there are there are some dates in which we'll be starting school for all students very soon. With that final item, Tuesday, as Dr. Gray is at the podium, we had the breakfast this week. And so we had the breakfast on IT Professionals Day. And so this is the time, as we talked about all these devices for the 13,000 students, Mr. Gallin and his staff on Tuesday, they were helping make sure that all matters were managed. So Mr. Robbins and I knew that on Tuesday, they could not possibly step away, certainly not on Wednesday. They had to continue delivering devices and fixing devices as they will continue doing. But we have a certificate for Mr. Gallin, which he did not know about. And his entire team has boxed lunches being delivered on Friday tomorrow. To conclude IT Professionals Day, we appreciate the entire IT team. Mr. Dr. Gray, would you like to read the certificate that you have from Mr. Gallin?
Yes. Topeka Public School Certificate of Appreciation. Topeka Public School District Recognized Instructional Technology Department for your service to the district in honor of National IT Professionals Day.
Congratulations.
Thank you. My team appreciates this.
A man of few words as he stands behind the computer. So we so appreciate you, Mr. Gallin, for helping this start be just, it's been quite a smooth start. So thank you and your team for the exceptional job in that regard. The last person that is here is Mr. Kathy. He just wanted to share a little bit about his first week of school from an athletic perspective as he's coming up and grabbing the microphone so that everyone can see you, Mr. Kathy, on the screen. Come a little closer to the board. You're perfect. You don't have to go to the corner. You can stand right there, sir. And they can all see you. All right. So Mr. Kathy, he will just share that a little update on terms of just in general that his students have continued to practice. With his sharing, he does have a proposal for you. It is uploaded on Board Docs for those that are looking at the board meeting online. It is at your table. We are asking that at this time, we'd like for our students to return to playing sports in September. He will tell you what that date is and that is the proposal that is before you. We'd like for them to begin playing this month. And he'd also like to share that he has purchased masks for his students to play as well as provided a waiver that is also in front of you for parents to sign. Would you like to share what date you'd like for them to start and any other first week of school updates, sir?
Okay, first week of school update for athletics, we've continued to practice. In all athletic venues, our teams have continued to compete, both home and away, being very successful in our moderate and low risk category. So last week, we had a young man at Topeka West specifically that won the cross country meet, has been invited to an elite race later on this year. So that's really an amazing feat for him. Seen a lot of positive things going on there. Our teams have been able to maintain safety, sanitation. Seen a lot of positive things going on there. Our teams have been able to maintain safety sanitation with that. So our proposal would be to move forward with football, starting on September twenty fifth, which is the Friday. Competitions as scheduled and then complete our complete out our season as previously scheduled. And we have also ordered masks for our athletes to be wearing during competitions.
We open this up for any questions that board members might have. If there are not any, then we will turn it back over to the board for your discussion later in action.
Dr. Boenwick.
What sort of antigen testing will be performed for the athletes?
I believe that question that you have listed for the health department, they have answered all of the questions that you all submitted and they have put them at your seat so that you have those particular answers which are from the health department. Mr. Kathy, as principal and AD may not necessarily be able to address the health department questions. However, those are at your table and I can read them out loud for the public if you'd like as well, sir.
Well, and the MIAA has decided to postpone football further. Arkansas State played Kansas State last Saturday and they had twelve athletes test positive two days later. I wonder what that'll do for Kansas State and Big Twelve. But is there any thought of having the football players remain virtual?
The biggest concern with remaining, having football players remain virtual at that time, one. Our football players make up the largest population of our students that are at risk and struggle academically. So they're the ones who, when we bring them back on the campus, are the most needing our attention when it comes to making sure their academic needs are met. They encompass the largest variety of students across the district. So therefore, these young men that are playing football right now are needing that time when they come back into campus to get that one-on-one attention and ensure they're getting all their needs met.
Regarding the antigen testing, the one sheet that's kind of a half sheater was the answer to that from the health department, which the health department has shared that the antigen tests have significant limitations. So that's why they're being used daily to decrease the number of false negatives. And additionally, there would be significant costs with daily testing. And the organizations that are using them have full-time medical staffs to interpret that data. So that's just a summation of what was mentioned by the health department regarding antigen testing.
But they didn't say how often or if it'd be done at all.
Well, what they've listed are the health pieces in terms of it can be done. And in instances of college football, even in some organizations, it is being used. However, they also shared the reason that that has significant limitations and would not be something that perhaps we might do in a public school for the reasons they have noted.
Mrs. Bulley.
All of our other teams that have been in their regular schedules are staying healthy and being able to go to other counties and continue to play. And we haven't had any problems there.
We have not had any problems with going to other communities and competing and returning home at all to this point.
We don't know that. Because because kids can be asymptomatic. You know, a scenario could be, I'm not an obstructionist. I'm an athlete too. I want people to play football. I don't like this at all. But the truth of the matter is you don't know a kid to me totally asymptomatic positives give disease to their parents, their grandparents. Just like the wedding in Maine, nine people died who weren't even directly involved in that way. So you just don't know. I I recognize that you haven't found any positives and you don't know. You know, a lot of what I wrote, I wrote to you and Dr. Anderson, you guys hopped right on it. I'm so impressed with what you guys have done. I can only see one reason, one thing that would make would give me pause for not okaying this. And that's, why do you wear masks? Well, you wear, you don't wear masks to protect yourself. You wear masks to protect the other people. And I know Dr. Anderson has told me, we can't make the other districts wear masks when they play us. But that, that's what gives me pause. I mean, we're protecting their kids. Why can't they protect our kids?
And I will tell you, Dr. Morrison, that some teams apparently have actually purchased masks. And so we do know that that there are other teams across the state of Kansas that are using masks. Mr. Kathy, speak to that. Can you speak to that briefly?
So we have, in addition to the actual face mask similar to this, which would be an athletic face mask, there's a face shield that you can put on a helmet. They now have an upper one that goes over the top and then a lower that covers the bottom. So it goes down below the chin, which will be part of what we'll be putting on helmets. So that way, any aspiration that's coming out from the opponent would be stopped from permeating beyond the helmet as much as possible. So that that would help with that. So now we have an additional layer of protection for them.
So we have learned that there are some teams that are also using masks that are outside of Topeka. However, we will share that while we can encourage masks and we'll be sharing what we're using. We don't buy their uniforms, nor can we mandate what they do or don't do. But we certainly will be sharing what we're doing with all individuals because we just think it's a good practice to share in general what we find that might be most helpful and useful with our colleagues.
And I really want to thank you for for listening and doing the best you can. I mean, this is just a bad situation, isn't it? And I know the coaches want to play. I know the kids want to play. I want them to play. So I think I'm going to support this.
Mrs. Bulley.
So as being the home team, you know, having them come visit us, we can't have requirements of what they do at our home field to come play us.
We could not dictate that as to as far as we can dictate their numbers that they can come into the facility, crowd control. But as far as when it comes to saying that, you know, this is what they're going to have to wear, then I believe that's something that we would. We don't purchase their uniforms. So to for them to say that that's not part of our uniform would would limit us to being able to compete.
And Ms. Bulley, any of the case of rules will be able to dictate and reinforce. And certainly we're looking at also increasing our spectators slightly so that we have three people instead of none or one, which is what we currently had under red. However, beyond that, and so we will determine who can and can't come in. But beyond that, clothing and what they wear and where they purchase it or what kind is not something that we would. But we will be encouraging it. We'll be sharing it. And we've already purchased our both face shield and mask. And Dr. Morrison, both Mr. Kathy and I want to thank you greatly, sir, not only for your comments and suggestions, but for your support.
Ms. Stuart Campbell.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to say I'm a I'm a huge fan of our students playing sports, being involved in other extracurricular activities. And these are skills that teach them lessons for 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 life. And it teaches them how to be a part of something bigger than themselves, you know, being part of a team. And with that, we're all on the same stop the spread of COVID team. So with that in mind, I want to say that I will support this proposal. And I would like to make the very strong recommendation of us all being on the stop the spread of COVID team. I know it's, we can't mandate it, but I'd like to make the recommendation for our athletes who can stay remote. I know it's not, it's not best for everyone, but for those who can stay remote, I'd like it just to be on the record that that's, I would like to make that recommendation. And I also want to say that I know there are a lot of non-district affiliated leagues out there. There are kids playing sports and my son is one of them. I have an eighth grader at Landon. And so I, this is, this is hard. This is a really, really hard situation we're all in. So I told my son, you're going to have to make a choice. When we move to phase two, hybrid, you don't play in this league. And you can go back to school in person for two days and and not play. And it was a hard decision for him to make, but he he chose sports and he's going to stay home. But we're in a situation where we could make that decision. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Munoz.
I didn't see it anywhere. Maybe you can help remind me. I'm not sure if you talked about it last time. Tell me about band and cheer and dance. Will they play or not play a part as?
Currently, the the cheer and dance teams will play a part of this. I've spoken in depth with our three band directors at the three high schools to get their input as we were developing this plan to see, okay, how can we stay? Keep our crowds safe if we were to play. Our band directors right now are of the opinion until they can get their band together to play as a group, they don't want to perform. Do a public performance. It would be similar to me bringing a football team and say, okay, I'm gonna line you all up and let's go and play a basketball game and I'm gonna draw everything up and expect you to perform perfectly. There there's a concern for the bands, being able to perform at the level in which they perform at. And so the directors are of the opinion that until we can get our bands together, we need to, you know, just kind of pause on that. We're going to practice and make them better musicians. But until we're able to get together to make the sound that is music combined, we're afraid that we'll make noise. And that is not a product that we want to put out.
So Mr. Munoz, know that the band right now, they're practicing only remotely. So they're not practicing as a group. So they're practicing in their own homes. So at this time, no band is not participating at this time. Yes, to the other areas and the other areas, given the size of the football field, the cheerleading, young people and others will be socially distanced and following similar rules and also wearing masks as well, where as appropriate.
Yeah, that's one of my concerns is it's still not optimal. And reducing to make sure only those individuals who are necessary for this to take place that they're on there. And so I I worry about band and cheer and dance, although they're an important part of it, the players. If we're going to do this, players are the ones who have to absolutely be there. And then looking at other ways to reduce just to who's there. I mean, just you reduce the number of individuals, you reduce transmission.
And I do know one thing I, we have talked, all the high schools have agreed. Typically at a football game, we had our freshmen JV and varsity cheer teams at the games. We will only have our varsity cheer teams. That will reduce the number of cheerleaders we have at the game to help support the team. And then our dance team. So our combined cheer and dance teams will not exceed fifty students total. So that is part of what we've done to reduce those numbers in that area. And then those cheerleaders that do freshman and JV would go to the non-varsity level games and cheer at those.
Dr. Boenwick.
We have denied our students live graduation, prom, all sorts of things. When I was in Manhattan, there'd be a fight before every Junction City, Manhattan football or basketball game. It was a regular routine that the police often were involved in. Many memories, yes. I don't expect anything like that, but I recognize they are important. Doing four sports in high school, I appreciate it. But I would like to see testing done. It says testing can be done, but it doesn't say with what kind of frequency. Also, I've had more than one phone call from parents of volleyball participants. And they would like to see two per student so that both parents can attend.
We, this proposal that's in here is an increase to three parents for every home event. So that includes volleyball and soccer.
And Dr. Boenwick, so that you know, the Shawnee County Health Department only tests if you actually have symptoms. If you don't have symptoms, they will not test. And we've actually had students turned away at a particular high school where they went to become to get tested. So you have to have special permission from Dr. Pizzino. And if there's some reason as to why that should occur, then he may allow that. But generally, they must have symptoms at this time. And we've also learned from the University of Kansas Clinic, which is at Topeka High, and they do provide testing. They've also said they cannot test unless there are symptoms and they are not reimbursed for testing without that.
Are there any, Dr. Morrison?
I'll just make a comment about that. I mean, testing is available and testing can be done. It is going to be expensive and the newer tests out are just haven't gotten here. I mean, the reason the Big Ten opened up is because they can do antigen testing. And they do that the week before. The NFL does antigen testing all the time. But they have the money. And I I don't suspect that we'll be doing testing this football season, maybe never. I don't know. But it would be nice. You know, we could feel very calm about the whole thing if we could do antigen testing in a very simple way, but we can't right now.
I think the NCAA is doing testing three days a week and then they've got deeper pockets than we do, certainly. Are there other questions for Mr. Kathy? Mr. Munoz.
I'm sorry, I might have missed it. So I I've done some checking to see, you know, what are other local areas in terms of audience allowing? And most others, if I may be wrong, allowed two, but we're proposing three. Tell me again, the logic behind three as opposed to two?
The, from the proposals I've seen and looked through, they have a student section where they're bringing in students. I just don't, not having adult supervision with a family, I feel that's more important that we keep it as a family unit. So that way, anybody coming in will come in with an approved adult. So even though it may be mom, dad and little sister, it's a family unit coming in where there's an adult supervision with that school-aged child. So we're able to get an additional person in by making sure of that. So it's the same amount of crowd size. It's just more of a of a controlled environment where it's a family unit coming in rather than having a student section in those in those venues.
Okay, so no student section is the, okay.
No, we will not be having student sections at this time.
Any other questions? Mr. Munoz.
I'm sorry. The other question is, so things look great. And you know, one of the reasons why I wanted to wait two weeks is that things just were pretty bad. And weighing this, these two weeks, you know, bears out that things seem to be going in a positive direction and hopefully they continue. But my question is, what happens if things change and they they get a little worse?
Well, I will share that our proposal is to allow us to begin to play the season. We anticipate that over the course of this year, much like when we open up schools at some point, you know, the schools, the scorecard may change from month to month or from week to week. And as Dr. Pizzino mentioned, that, you know, once we open, which is why we're being so careful in our opening, that it's best not to flip back and forth. We can at any point delay or postpone a particular game. We certainly have that flexibility. And we can do that if we think that's the best appropriate step. But at this time, opening the season for the remaining games is our proposal. Do you want to add to that, Mr. Kathy, very briefly?
No, ma'am. That encompassed everything I was going to say. Thank you.
So if we're traveling to other counties to play, are we using extra buses? Are we putting one student per seat with a space in between? How are we transporting our students for safety?
On busing, we are limiting a bus to twenty-three students. Face masks must be worn at all times for, and this goes across sports or anything else. So they're wearing a face mask at any time. They're on the bus, twenty-three students, which puts one student per seat throughout the entire time. So what we have done is we've reduced the number of kids we're taking. So we're not really taking any additional buses this year. But rather we, rather than taking sixty kids, we're taking forty-five kids. So we've reduced the number of kids that are traveling to an out-of-town event.
Mr. Kathy, I just have one question and that would be is could we at least have dialogue with opposing teams and see their receptivity to wearing masks?
That will always be something that we will put in. There's a recommendation for them to do when competing against us as we'll be wearing them. We will recommend that the opponents wear them at the same time, too.
Seems fair from a competition perspective, as Dr. Morrison points out, we're protecting their students as well. So I think that would be an argument that we could make and hopefully win. Are there any other questions, Dr. Morrison?
Just, just one. I foresee some students. I foresee some students, you know, not doing what they're supposed to do. Pulling a mask off or. The coaches will discipline this type of action.
Yeah, so the coaches will be setting up their expectations with their teammates and within, within their teams. And when, when a student does, athlete does not meet that expectation, then there are consequences for their choices would be any other expectation a coach sets out there for their team.
Thank you, Mr. Kathy.
Thank you all very much for your support and time tonight.
Okay, we have an action item and that is to entertain this motion for, to proceed as, as Mr. Kathy has proposed. Entertain a motion to do that. If Dr. Reverend Williams makes a motion. Thank you. We have a motion to approve this proposal. Do we have a second? Dr. Morrison offers a second. Any further discussion amongst ourselves? I don't see any more, so we're ready to vote, Mrs. Lester.
Vote is open. Motion carries six in favor and one abstain.
Thank you, Mrs. Lester. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is board member comments. Dr. Bonebrake, we'll start at the end with you.
Well, the key to equality is quality. And I think the administration in 501 and this education system is doing everything it can within budget limitations. I'm impressed, but I think. We ought to be knocking on the legislature's door. I think we can do more with more. Thank you.
Dr. Morrison.
Just very briefly, I want to thank administration and Mr. Kathy for listening to me. They have, they've done wonderful for, for accepting this. And, and the only other, just a little admonition is, you know, when we are looking for this reduction in COVID. We just had Labor Day. And so I'm expecting, I hope not, I hope it keeps going down. But I'm, I'm afraid by, by the time we get to that Monday that we're going to start other stuff. We're going to be back up again, but boy, I hope not, because I really want to progress. I want to get kids back in school. So thanks again, administration.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Mr. Munoz.
Right, I want to say thank you to everyone who reached out, you know, those players, students, parents. I think. Systems and groups like this, like school board, don't work unless we have active individuals who are voicing their opinion. And regardless of whether they, you know, I might agree or not agree. And same thing goes for all of other, you know, city council, county commission. I think it's an important process that more individuals need to, to engage with. And then our senior of the month, he reached out to me about doing something around. Voting and voter registration. And I thought that was interesting that he was recognized and for taking that initiative. So I, I want to say that if you're ever unhappy, I mean, being sure to speak up. And I'm glad that we had a couple of speakers during the public comments, that, that's an important part of it. And so, and my other thing was, just again, thank you to all the administrators and the teachers. Who are putting in time and half to try and make sure that they're doing everything they can for students. I think it was Ms. Morrissey, her comments about how they're bending over backwards to meet kids where they are. And whatever it is they need to be successful, that we're doing that. And it's that kind of effort that it's going to make sure that our, our kids are doing great despite the circumstances. Thank you.
Mrs. Bulley.
I would like to express to all the parents and students in our community that this last decision on football. Kindergarten. Preschool, these are all very hard decisions for each and every one of us. We understand and respect COVID and we understand the risks that we're taking. And we just want to say that these decisions are very hard for us. I congratulate the football families and the players that have asked us and lobbied to open up the football sport. I agree with the equity piece of it, but I want you to know that it is such a hard decision for all of us. And we wish all of you well. We hope you take all your precautions. I want to also ask our community to continue to wear your masks so that we can get our kids in school, get our numbers down. We really need our kids in school. Our teachers are making tremendous remote lessons. But we do our best job when our kids are in front of us in classrooms, so please wear those masks. And a big thank you to my host school, Scott State Street Ross, for inviting me in to see the first day of kindergarten and preschool. And a huge thanks to all of the staff in the building that were so brave to welcome them in with smiles and love. And continue your good work. We appreciate you all. Let's stay safe. Wear your masks, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bulley. Ms. Stuart Campbell.
Yeah, so I just want to say that my experience with my own middle school children. This, we've now had a full week of school has been really positive. I've been, I've seen the teachers' hard work, like it's coming through the screen. And, and my, my kids are learning, so all is well in my house. But I'm, I'm very, very much aware that this is not the case across our district. There are some kids who just, it's really, it's really difficult to be learning remote for a myriad of reasons. So I'm really, I really, really hope this trajectory of our transmission cases continue to go down. So we can get back to this, to, to hybrid, so we can get to our hybrid phase. So just, yep, everyone keep wearing your mask. So thank you also to administration and just all the teachers. I, I see how hard you're working. Thank you. That's all.
Reverend Williams.
Oh, thank you. I'd just like to piggyback on Mrs. Bulley's comments regarding our. Decisions that we made regarding athletics this evening. It was difficult. There is no perfect storm when it comes to, or perfect solution when it comes with that issue. But I think every effort has been taken to mitigate or minimize the impact that it will have. But to the student athletes, I just want to express my appreciation for their patience, but also encourage them to take time to express their appreciation to their parents. And all those that have supported them through this time. I visited Meadows and Lowman Prep yesterday morning. Unfortunately, it was at a time when the students weren't there. But in the afternoon, I went to Williams and Shaner. This was after Dr. Bonebrake's. Dance show, but. I was impressed with the setup and I think it's, it's going to work. And looking forward to when we can add more students. And this coming week, I will be attending, albeit virtually, the annual Cube Conference next Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. Just very briefly, just to reiterate, assuming we continue to follow our trend and don't have a Labor Day reversal. Kindergarten and preschool students will continue to attend school like they are now. And then starting on the 29th will be first through fifth grade and then sixth and ninth grade. Is that right?
Yes, for the students that are enrolled in school, so they got to enroll before Monday.
So you better go enroll. And then October 1st, or the first Monday in October, we'll start the hybrid plan for middle and high school kids. So that's exciting. We're anxious to get them all back. Just want to acknowledge Mr. Gowan and his IT team again. The work we've done to get devices in our students' hands and make them work to, to the best of our ability is, is huge. And so congratulations to your team and thank you for all that you and your team do for our students. That's all I have. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.